Three, discussion of possible action regarding the redistricting of Woods County. Guess you're up.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen, you guys let me know if you can see it.
Yeah?
Yep, you can see the map?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, so let me make a couple of things a little bit clearer for you guys to see. Okay, so, oh, this gold line that you see is going to be representing the new lines or the proposed lines, and then where you'll see a black dotted line is going to be your current districts. So right now, a lot of it's overlapping because I didn't change too much. Once I zoom into Alba, you'll be able to see that. So this is option one, and what we need to do is get your population within the allowable deviation, which is 5%. So looking at your current numbers, it looks like District 1 is slightly overpopulated, and District, the other two districts are within deviation, but we've gotta get 1 down to 5%. So that was the goal with this. Let me zoom in here, like I said, I only moved things around within the city limits of Alba, just because I was able to do it that way and figured that would be the simplest way to accomplish redistricting. So, with that, you can see the black dotted line, so this is where current number for District 3 is, and the gold line would be the new line, so that's where I moved it to. So, let me grab the print. So District 3 would then take it in this area right here. These numbers are census blocks, so that's telling you that there are seven people that live within this area right here. So essentially, picking up nine people here, and then the biggest pickup was this on the southern end in Alba, just on the south side of Highway 64. So this would be District 3 picking this up, and this is all within the city limits of Alba, so that's what this boundary is down here. And that's the only change I made. Just by doing those two things, I was able to get all three of the districts within the 5% deviation. So then we'll change on that one. I do have another option, and really, it just adds one more change to get everybody within 1%. So I do two options for everyone. The first option just gets everybody where they need to be, under 5% deviation, and then the second option gets everybody within 1%. So just depending on you guys, how strict you wanna be with it. Some counties really wanted to get their population as close as possible, and other counties were fine as long as it was under the 5%. So that's, that's up to you guys, so I just kinda do two options, so you guys can check that out. So that's the extent on here, if you guys wanna see something else, we can. If you want me to try something else, we can definitely do that too. But these were the changes that I needed to get everybody within. So it brought District 1 down to negative 1.14%, which was previously at 6.79. So these were the ones I needed to move.
So really, D3 is gonna gain stuff on the south end of town, and that's the only changes. And it's just, you're, you're just dealing with population.
Right, right.
Correct, all of this within the city limits of Alba, so she messed with anything.
Really here to just help us with population.
Right, that's all statute, yes.
The, as far as the road miles goes, that's up to us.
Yes, the stat, yes, I'm, I'm, my main priority is population, that's what's in the statute. So that has to be, that's like number one goal, it has to be doubled, is getting that, then the 5% deviation.
It's up to you guys, really.
Well, I mean, it-
Mine doesn't change, so it's whatever you guys wanna do.
It's not-
Well, you guys understand my concerns. It's the road miles and the money.
But the population ain't gonna make any difference.
It's not adding any roads or taking any roads away or nothing.
No, it'll still be the same for another ten years, and that's, that's what concerns me, is we're not, we're not treating everybody right. The, the road miles are so far off, it's, and this is the key. We can adjust them road miles now, and she can adjust that population all off of this Alba right here. We're gonna gain some, we're gonna lose some, but I'd like to see our road miles a little closer than 100 miles apart, huh?
Well, we can talk about the road miles if we do the population, I mean-
Because statute, well-
Well, road miles, if, if road miles change, there's gonna be some population changes out in there, a few.
No.
The rule-
No, if we don't, if, if, if you can change the road miles but not have to change the voting, the, the-
You're gonna have people out there on the miles that you pick up, that'll be in your district if you take some.
Then we could adjust it down to 1%, and then we're not gonna pick up that many people.
The population isn't what concerns me, is, is the, is, is the funding and how it's, how it looks to everybody, but how it really is, is, you know, a couple million dollars gets injected over there, and, and 700,000. If the tables were turned, you guys wouldn't like that either way. I just want the best for all citizens. That's our job as county commissioners, to take care of our districts, but coming together as a board to, to, to make sure it's best for all citizens. And, and them people down there have had the short end of the stick for a long time. Everybody knows, but this is the time to fix it. Whether it's a big, tough thing to swallow, I understand.
You can still do the population the way it is, or you can change to 1%. And if we take, if we, then we can talk about amongst us to change the road miles, and it's not gonna make enough swing, I don't believe, in the population to make any difference.
It would keep you still within that 5%, is what you're talking about.
Well, like I said, I'll do whatever you guys wanna do. I would just like to get our road miles a little closer. I, I'll take more, but, but I can't, I can't stomach what I've got and have to, I mean, I-
Nobody asked you to take more, John, with this.
No, I'm, I'm trying to give them up.
I know, but-
So I could be-
With what this has you-
Equal with the people, and, and get them a good road to their home, school bus.
But this is gonna change your road miles if we do this 5% or the 1% anyway.
Yeah, this shouldn't change road miles because it's all within city limits. So as long as you don't maintain the city limits of Alba roads, then this shouldn't change your road miles.
But I have population out there in them road miles. If, if these fellows are willing to take over some of my miles, them have people out there, that's population, right?
Right, yes, it could be adjusted outside of the city limits of Alba.
You're saying, I don't know how many people, I don't know how many people you're talking about changing. In Alba there, you said seven in this block, nine, 50, 100, 200?
Couple hundred people.
I don't know, but that's what I'm saying. If we get our road miles jiving like we like-
The deficit, the deficit-
Then you adjust the population.
The deficit was 240 some people, is that correct, or somewhere in there?
Yeah, so I'm using the adjusted numbers because you guys put on your survey that you wanted to adjust for prison population. So those are the numbers that I'm using. And I wanna say that District 3 was like-
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, we, we did not take the pri, the prison is not added in on this.
Correct, this is the, so what I'm basing this off of is not including the, the prison population that got taken out. Yeah, so I think it was like a couple, maybe a couple hundred, or maybe 100, 150 people that the other ones were under. So currently with this, with what I've added, District 3 now has an extra 103 people. And so we can adjust that, and there's still room, because neither, none of the three districts are at the 5% threshold. So they're within it, but you can get closer, so that can still be adjusted. There's room to move population around still if we need to. So that's up to you guys. What I said in the other option, they're closer to a 1% deviation, where District 2 moves over a little bit, and District 3 still has some of Alba. So there's, there's room to do different things, I just kinda presented an option that, that doesn't have as many changes.
But the rural population, I can't see that good enough.
So, can you give us our rural population versus our city population?
That, I don't have numbers on, I can get it for you, but I don't have it right now.
Could you produce that for us though, at a later date, or?
You're not gonna get, I don't see getting 150 people in rural population, no matter how the lines are split it up. You're not gonna pick up 150 people.
No, and-
So population wise, this is the best way to do it, population wise.
Well, if you guys are willing to take some, some miles and, and gain some people, then I need to get a little more people.
No.
Or less, whichever, I mean, it depends on how far I fall.
It's not gonna, I mean, we're still gonna be within-
We could figure the population pretty quick, out there in them, in that rule.
I, yeah, I don't see-
So this, this, right, these numbers are giving you the population, so like, and this census block right here, I'll highlight for you so you can see. This is one census block, and there's zero people there. There's zero people here, and this census block, there's four people. So I know it's, you don't wanna count them one by one, but that kinda gives you an idea, just to kind of all of how many people are out here. A lot of these are zeros, so-
And, and that map there, you could get us an email where we could print it off, where we could actually see it?
Yeah, I can send you, yeah, well, once we, you know, if you guys settle on a map that you like, then I'll send a PDF version of it, so that you guys can look at it closer.
You can't highlight that in numbers of the people.
I mean, I can, yeah, I can do like this, and it'll tell me how many people it is. Like if you wanted to take this area and move this chunk into District 2, that would be 29 people. All this red highlighted area.
So you're not-
I mean, I don't even really know where that's at. It's over there by Lester's, or Morningstar Church, maybe?
Well, you, no matter, I mean, but that's still not gonna get the 150, even if you go, then go south of Alba.
I mean, we could, we could go to, do there without it.
No, if you do, make the vote, you know, you wanna change something in Alba, and some points outside too.
Come up with, I'm good with.
Well, here's the deal, let's give their population, I mean, for, for eight years, I, or more, I've been taking care of, of D3 roads, and you should get the votes.
Ten, ten years.
Well, but, but you follow what I'm saying, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to doing that, and, I mean, ah.
Votes don't matter, it's the, it's the, it does matter, but I just would like, if we're gonna split our money equal and call it equal, and, and expect the same treatment, then I'd like to get the road miles equal, or get, get-
I just said that, I mean, I already been doing it.
Thirty-six miles.
You're getting the benefit of the votes, whatever, good or bad, whatever that is. If we, we just do that, and we agree upon some more miles, if that's what it takes.
That, that's where I'd like to end up, I already got one done.
This is not gonna make it very close. If we okay this, we can move road miles.
Right, exactly, and it'd just be a gentleman's agreement. They're, they're gonna get votes wherever those district lines are, no matter who takes care of the road.
But, stay to that, she says we need to do-
But changing, if we make a decision today on this, the certified miles stay the same? Is that what you're saying, lady?
Yes, it would be, because he's not changing any miles.
Everything has been changed, this is within the city limits of Alba. And I can have, oh, God, calculate the miles if I need to, but that's not something I-
Do we have to have this to you today? I mean, can we get this back to you, that, that we wanna change?
It's not for her, we just have to redo, we have to have this done by November 30th.
Correct, and once you, once you vote on it, I need the resolution to get to the city.
And we get, we get our road miles straight, we can come back to you and say, hey, we got a little bit of adjustment here in the population, and you can change that, and make that right?
If you do it before the 30th, then November.
Okay. How do we need to proceed, fellas? I'm, I'm good with what we're doing there, as long as we can kinda get things straight between us and the road miles.
So I can, I can send you a copy of that copy of this, so that you guys only get-
Place together populations, the way we're gonna fight now.
Yeah, 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 right there, them blocks, and like, like I said, this is the son-
And as by statute, it has, we have to do this.
So we do this, and then it doesn't make a damn to her what we do with the road miles.
No, no, that's not her job, it's our job.
So, but she's trying to help us just get our population right, so we can get that taken care of in the state.
And whichever you guys wanna do, it doesn't matter to me what we do in town, you know?
Oh, me either, I don't care.
And people don't care in town, that's, that's the thing, they-
Yeah, it's just they'll vote it for a different person.
Right.
Well, and if you did it figured out, I don't remember 30th, you might have them people, or, or I might lose them people, right?
Well, we can figure out the population today, that, the, the miles can be worked out, that has to be worked out amongst us, but it's a major ordeal to go through and redo the whole county for population.
And we're not gonna do that, right?
Right, right, I mean-
No, not if, no.
She said she has till November 30th, we have till then to figure out a road mile, she-
We don't even have to have then to figure, to figure out the population deal today.
If you wanna change the shape of the district, then I need to know that. But if, if you were leaving the district the way that it is, population wise, and you guys just make an agreement on road miles, I don't need to know that. But if you are trying to change the look of the district or the shape of it, I will need to know that.
Right.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, it's gonna kinda change our district lines, that you're gonna change the map a little bit.
Right, and, and we need to decide on that, to be within that 5% differential.
But the only district line would be changes right in the town of Alba, basically. You will just gather up voting blocks in Alba.
Yeah, but if you're gonna take over some of my road miles, and he's gonna take over some, what about them people that, that change? Are they still voting for me?
They, yeah, they still vote for you.
That's, why, why do that? Why not get it, we got the opportunity to get this certified and right.
What difference does it make?
The certified road miles?
Right, I mean, no-
It makes all the difference, that's how we pay.
If you take population in Alba, and, and you still have 16 people out there, say, north of DeComan, that, that have the opportunity to vote for you, but D1's maintaining their roads, I mean, they still have the opportunity to vote for you, and you're not even have to do the roads.
That, that's fine, if that's how you guys wanna do it like that, I'm good with that. As long as I'm not having to, in a snowstorm, people's calling me, hey, these are your road miles, really, D1 takes care of them, something like that, you know what I mean?
I'm pretty sure that's, I mean, it's, I mean, John, you're gonna get that, or I don't know whether you're gonna get it, I get that anyway. You know, hey, you know, can you come on down to here, and you get that too, can you blade on over here? We're still gonna get some of that, that's not ever gonna change. You know, but, your district line, they see you over there, hey, can you come on over here, and that's gonna change it. I don't, I mean, here's the deal, if we do this today, which gets us due with the state, and we sit down and figure out how we're gonna do that, that's between us, and we have, if, if I say I'm gonna take these miles, then I'm taking these miles. And you, if somebody calls you, then you just say, hey, this is the way we change the road miles, he's taking care of it, you call him. And I, you know, I mean, I'll be there forever, but I hope the next guy will do the same thing.
Well, I, I, I hope so too, David, I don't know for all of you.
I mean, it doesn't matter when all of us are gone, they can change it, do whatever you want.
I just see a problem, and I'd like to correct it. I, I think that's our, our, that's what, what, what I got elected to do, to make things better, and what, what is seen-
We just need to-
Maybe not is what it feels like, and, and it's whatever you guys wanna do. You got the power to do it how you want. I just want it, I want it close to being fair on the road miles, the population, I'll take people, I'll just pick what I think is want.
I don't like to comment, we got the power, you do too, if you don't like this, then-
I don't like, I don't like certifying it today with the gentleman's agreement that we're gonna change our road miles. I'd like to have them certify these, these district lines that change, these, this population, or these people now. I'll take whoever you guys give me, I'll do however you guys want, but I'd like it, our road miles to match our population a little closer.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with you working on the road miles.
That's all that concerns me, David.
But, I mean, I'm just, we need to, this is the, probably the, as time will change, we're gonna lose more rural population, no question about that.
Yeah?
So I don't see the rural miles changing, and I don't, I don't have a problem myself, well, I mean-
There is no miles-
You're already, you're already dealing with, Randy's got some of D3 roads for a while. Do those people call and yell at you when the snow's not pushed off?
No, no, I mean, they call me and ask me, and I tell them, well, Randy's taking care of that, them's my certified miles, but if he doesn't take care of it, call me back, I never get a call back.
Right, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, with that, I mean, I, I'll do the same with you. I mean, I, I don't think I've ever, not done anything you needed or helped.
No, and I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just would like to get our road miles a little closer to equal, that's the only thing that concerns me.
But this gets us squared up with the state.
If we do this, and, and get our road miles equal, everything's great.
That gets us squared up with the state, we do that.
If that's what we need to do, let's do it.
Which option, the first one, the 5% or the second?
I can't really see.
Well, the way I got it, the first one, the first-
Pretty much you just go, take the tree streets, it all, it all is-
This is the first option.
The first option, just John takes a little, couple of little spots of D1. D2 stays the same, correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am?
Yes, D2 stays the same, D3 takes over some area within the city limits of Alba from District 1. Option 2, I'll show you, is basically the same thing, except District 2 will change slightly.
So, I, I don't care, District 2 get a little bit bigger in Alba?
It takes, it takes, it takes a block, yep.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only change, just so that, gotta make these a little bigger. So in this option, this area stays with District 1. District 3 is gonna take this area right here, these two blocks, and then District 3 moves to the east of block, to 8th Street.
Okay, you stood in line, that's where D2 changes, right there.
Yeah, D2 changes right here, so the previous, your current district lines are right here, and the new one just moves it over one block.
Okay, you know where that is, David?
Can you look at that cursor and see what street that is? The north side of Alba and east west? That way he goes?
Well, I can, I know on that one, that's nine to eight, and, and over to Washington School. Washington School's right there, where below her mouth, or-
Right there.
Right there.
This is, yeah, this is 8th Street and 9th Street.
You would move over and take Washington School, basically.
I already have Washington School, it's everything north. I have it on the west side of the middle school now, and I go to the east side.
And mine is over there by the Sabre Trips and stuff, right?
Yes, yes.
Behind it, Foster's house, and-
Yeah, just here.
Isn't that kinda where Foster's-
Yeah, in the tree streets, right?
Little store street, or whatever.
But that's, that's existing, the gold line there is 1st Street.
So it's not necessarily, this, this street right here is Minno Street, and the boundaries are city limits.
Okay.
So it would go down to Minno Street, so you would get everything, John, would be like down to College Avenue, or, uh-
That's Noble, that's Noble to Boulevard, and then-
I gotta call this now, right? And it just gonna move me over here, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it would still be south of 281.
Right.
Right, at 64, I'm seeing, yeah, not Lightnight Road, or?
No.
It wouldn't go that far?
Wouldn't go that far.
No, it goes just to this side of Croft, or Croft, or where they're at. It's Croft Street, that street that goes north, uh, south of, on the west side of Croft.
So would he have that housing addition then back in there, or the?
He, he would take all of that on the, the east, or west side of Minna, and you would be to the east side of Minna.
So he'd get all the tree streets in?
Yes, he'd get all the tree streets, and then it ends up there.
Well, it's simple, it's right over there. All that right over there.
But Mayor and Catherine's house would be still in your district, and he's just on the west side of Minna.
And all those Green Street houses, right?
Yeah.
I just, I don't wanna cut Mark's-
Is that the option you guys like, right there?
Mark.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'm fine with it.
This one puts you guys really close, so District 1 is down 15 people from zero where it needs to be from the ideal. District 2 is over 4 people, and District 3 is over 12. So you guys are really close to being at a perfectly non-deviated district, I guess, to being at the ideal value, so.
I'm, I, I'm good with that.
Okay, so I will make a PDF of this, I'll do one that's overall for the county, which really won't show much change, because nothing changed outside of Alba, and then I'll do a close-up of the city limits of Alba, so you guys can see where those changes are. And then, if you want to, like I said, I don't know where you guys laying, and then on the road miles, but if you want me to try to work out something that would keep population in, and that might make road miles a little more even, I can, I can do that, if you don't want me to, I don't have to.
We can make the road miles even, but I mean, I'm for close.
We'll work on that deal, if we, but we need to, we need to vote on an option, shall we call it Option 2?
Uh, yes, this is, this is Option 2, I haven't just looked at that yet.
Right.
And that's where all three of you will change a little.
Yes, that's, that's the option where everybody changes a little.
Just here in Alba a little.
Right, right. Have I got a motion for that, for Option 2?
I'll have a motion, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate your time, and you'll get to us that map then, right?
Yes, I will, and once I send you that map, there'll be a resolution you guys will need to fill out. And that has, basically just dating which you guys voted on, that you passed it, and it'll maybe have a stamp and everything, and then once you do that, you'll send it back to me, and that will let me know that you guys are finished with it, you adopted this map, and then I will get that sent out to the county election board, so they can work on your precincts.
Okay, very good, appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, lady.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get that over to you soon as I can.